Good afternoon. Welcome to the August 11th Council Workshop for the City of Oceanside. And I'd like to ask for roll call.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
And Deputy Mayor Keim is joining us on Zoom. Deputy Mayor Keim, can you hear us?
Here.
All right. And all are present.
Thank you. Well, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So our first item and really the only workshop item is item number one, which is approval of the beach sand feasibility study report and direction to staff to move to the next phase of the project to include design permitting and environmental work for a groin and bypass system pilot project. I'm going to begin with a report by Kyle Coger, our Public Works Director.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. Kyle Coger, Public Works Director. Today, I'm joined by Brian Leslie with GHD and Aaron Holloway with GHD to help me with this presentation. And I also have Russ Cunningham with the city here to help with questions at the end. Today, we're sharing the results of our beach sand feasibility study. A little bit of background, Oceanside has a 79-year history of beach erosion, starting with construction of the Camp Pendleton Harbor in 1942. Oceanside has been losing its shoreline for many years. In the past 20 years since being monitored, we have lost shoreline at the rate of three feet per year on average. We are below our baseline beach width from 20 years ago, even with the annual dredging project and the regional sand beach projects, one and two. Sand nourishment alone is not working. The study was initiated to identify feasible solutions to protect the beach from long-term erosion by either utilizing renourishment projects of beach-suitable sands or construction of retention devices to retain and reduce the loss of sand or a combination of both. The goal of the study was to identify strategies that are environmentally sensitive, financially feasible, and have a reasonable chance of being approved through the regulatory permitting process. Staff along with GHD held several virtual public meetings with the community, stakeholders, resource agencies, and interested parties. Some of those to include the California Coastal Commission, the Regional Water Quality Control Board, Corps of Engineers, Surf Rider Foundation, Sand Dag Shoreline Preservation Work Group, San Diego Climate Collaborative, Resilient Cities Catalyst, and we also had two public The study was initiated with the review and analysis of relevant global projects. Six concepts were developed as a starting point. The concepts were put through a multi-criteria decision matrix and ranked, and the matrix considered downdrift impacts, nearshore reef impacts, sea level rise resilience, estimated construction costs, lifecycle costs, surfing impacts, and aesthetic impact. These concepts were narrowed down to one option from each category of retention and Through the process, we've heard several public concerns. Some of those include the pilot location. The current pilot location as a proposal was to put it near Wisconsin Street. Since we had our second, yeah, our second public workshop on June 30th, we've heard from a lot of folks in the South Oak community saying we should, the first phase of this project, we should put it further to the south, so in further in South Oceanside coastline. We heard concerns about the schedule and phasing, downdrift impacts, surfing impacts, this setting a precedent as coastal management going forward, and the resiliency of this project's sea level rise. And with that, I'll turn it over to Brian Leslie with GHD to talk about the technical aspects of the project.
My name is Brian Leslie with GHD. Overview of our technical or analysis part of our talk today, we're talking about these five things. Start with coastal challenges and the challenges that we see in the City of Oceanside and why it's been so tough to see a beach grow in Oceanside and why the beach is chronically eroding. We'll go over our nourishment and sand retention options. We'll then talk about how they performed and the multi-criteria analysis, and also through the numerical modeling exercise. We'll then talk about our sand distribution options and then summarize findings. The coastal challenges in the City of Oceanside, we see these four as being the primary challenges. The Oceanside Harbor complex and its, the way it blocks literal drift, and also sediment gradation. So we'll get into sediment gradation, beach particle size, and saying particle size and why that matters. Talk about the limited gains of the beaches seen from the Army Corps Harbor Dredging Program that happens annually. How the city beaches have performed on those two beach nourishment projects that Kyle mentioned from '01 and 2012, regional beach sand. And also just kind of the softer challenge of the difficulty of reaching political, social, and regulatory consensus on options moving forward. So challenge number one has to do with, this is probably the most recognized challenge in the city, is the construction of the harbor and that's impact on downdrift beaches. Harbor was first started to be constructed in the 40s and then built upon in the 60s. And what you can see is just that notable decrease in beach width downdrift right after harbor construction. This plot shows a 1934 survey of mean sea level and a plan form, so like looking down on the shoreline compared to shoreline in 2006, and you kind of see that notable erosional wave on the downdrift side of the harbor. Conversely, on the updrift side, you see that accretion right against the north breakwater there, North Jettie on the Camp Pendleton side, and then that kind of spans to the north. An important consideration with the quantity of sand, so there's the sand being trapped by the harbor. There's two, there's things that we need to understand about the sand within the City of Oceanside. So Southern California beaches and Oceanside in particular has varying gradation of sand. Your recreational dry beach is mostly coarser in gradation, and as you drop off into the intertidal and subtidal surf zone, the sediment gradation drops off and gets finer. So the harbor is blocking not only a lot of sand, but also that coarse gradation sand that builds that recreational beach. So you see the picture, the photo on the left is Camp Pendleton Beach, which is wide, 300 to 500 feet in width. Compare that to South Oceanside where we have a submerged profile or submerged beach or low tide beach, whatever you want to call it, but you have shoreline protection and then a beach that's flat and fine-grained. So this relates to our second challenge in that the, we're getting limited gains from the Corps' Harbor Dredging Program. That's really a navigational dredging program, so it's not, it's not a massive revelation, but that sand that comes from that program is very fine-grained and makes its way into that intertidal and surf zone as you kind of see within these three schematics. So schematic one, these schematics show what beach nourishment fill, how that responds on a beach. So schematic one shows if the beach nourishment grain size is greater than native, it kind of stays up higher in the profile and makes that recreational beach. Compare that to schematic three, which is what happens with the Army Corps dredging program annually. That sand basically is finer than native, so it makes its way off into the intertidal and surf zone. Combine that with the timing of this program, which happens in the spring of every year, which represents a shift in the northwest or north swell season to the south swell season. This net longshore current shifts from going southerly to back to another northerly. So sand's being placed as south as they can get it within the city. The sand is fine-grained, currents going to the north, the sand just makes its way back to the north end of the city. It kind of creates this closed loop of benefit where basically from the pier to the harbor is all that really kind of gets the net benefit of this program. The third challenge we spoke to previously is the poor performance of the regional beach fill projects. This is a picture of them dredging the sand from the regional beach sand project in 2012. Sand was a really coarse, good source of sand for beach building, came from offshore deposits. It was placed on the beaches, but it quickly dispersed and went to the south. So that happened both years. The city participated in the program and got 300,000, 400,000 cubic yards respectively from those two projects. There were clear winners and losers in that program. The City of Carlsbad was, we view as a winner, and especially on the north side of Carlsbad. And we view this as an analog for what the City of Oceanside beaches would have, how they would have responded should sand retention structures have been in place. So this is, this aerial is a picture of Tamarack State Beach fronting Agua Héjonda, where the warm water jetties and cool water jetties stabilize the entrance and also help the side and some of the things that go on within the lagoon. But what you can see here is that the regional beach sand fills have both kind of made their way down to these beaches and still are being held by these sand retention structures. Tamarack beaches are still seeing benefit from that program over 10 years after that project happened. So again, a good analog for what could have happened in Oceanside should structures have been in place. The fourth challenge is a softer one. It's this one of reaching consensus around an alternative between these different groups of stakeholders and regulatory agencies. Wanted to just acknowledge that and acknowledge past work that's happened in the city. A core study that was completed in the 80s that was way more expansive and took more years and cost more money than ours, came up with the same solution of sand retention as being a preferred alternative from a, both performance-wise to kind of solve the erosion problems, but also on a benefit cost side, just kind of like fiscal reasons as well as all the benefits that you'd see from it. That solution was ultimately discounted for social and basically the community rejected that, and they went with the experimental sand bypass program or project in the end. And that, so basically a compromise. That project failed for a number of reasons that we won't get into, but the study details this, the whole history of the study and some of the things leading up to it are documented within this book called Saving California's Coast by O'Hare and et al. If you want to read up more about it. I mean, so that was back in the 80s, and I want to just kind of acknowledge where we are today, which I view as a pretty clear inflection point. We have the beaches being anecdotally referred to as the worst you've ever seen and over, you know, their time of residents being here. The data supports this as well. And we also, and just in light of sea level rise planning and sea level rise science, there's just, there's a need for action. The agencies have never been as open to bold and innovative type solutions as they are right now. There was, they're pretty closed down on certain types of solutions in the past. So it seems like there's a good window of opportunity to do something that would make a difference. The next couple of slides will go over some of our project approach. We recommended project phasing or piloting and then going, moving towards a build-out scenario within the city. It's based on our experience in Southern California or just getting coastal projects through in California, and also trying to get past this regulatory hurdle of sand retention. So the idea would be to start with a pilot project in an affected reach within the city coupled with a robust scientific monitoring program so that we can study, learn, and adapt, and then scale that project up with success. We've laid out a rough timeline of implementation on the slide. It's, this is really coarse, and I don't want anyone to latch onto this, but should the study move forward in 2021, we think we could maybe build Phase One within 2025 should compromises or people kind of work together and move towards a solution. And then we could then study, adapt, and expand over time. We view the scientific monitoring program as being a key component to getting this project approved and being successful. We've laid the groundwork for this program within our study. We've, this is being led by the Scripps Institution of Oceanography, and it's being, also on the ground level, we've started a citizen science program, or I shouldn't say we, but the community has. SOS and other community groups have stepped in under the leadership of Scripps to monitor the subaerial beach. Scripps has studied the intertidal and offshore environment and built the scientific baseline. Within the scientific monitoring plan, the things we'd be looking at to study with our pilot project is a change in beach width or volume, looking at potential impacts to the downdrift beaches, as well as looking at short-term events, how the project responds to an El Nino event or even a single event that's large, and then recreational impacts, both active and passive, and how our project impacts that. These next several slides, I'll go through our four project alternatives. We looked at nourishment, groynes, artificial reefs, and jetty extensions to help solve the problems in Oceanside. These are all compared against the no project for context and also just prepared purposes. Wanted to touch on the pilot reach again because you'll notice that every one of these alternatives is laid out in this northern reach along the south strand from about Seagate to Wisconsin Street. We've heard from the community, we understand that we've, you know, more work needs to be done to cite this pilot based on, you know, community outreach, regulatory considerations, and logistics, and economics. So this is all going to be, you know, deferred to the next phase. So what we're really talking about within this context is just kind of a representative area where this, this project could go within these like basic kind of geometry of, we need about 4,000 feet of shoreline, and we need about 1,000 to 1,200 feet of spacing between our structures. So the first alternative is beach nourishment. So this alternative is very similar to RBSP-2 in both footprint and volume. It would be about 300,000 cubic yards every five years. So what this option would do is just kind of ramp up the frequency of the regional beach sand project. We assumed offshore source of sand for simplicity at this point. We'd, I'll talk about the sand distribution and sand bypassing types of systems we looked at to try to up the economics of bringing a lot of sand to this, to the beach. I want to talk about lifecycle costs for a second because each of these alternatives will display this lifecycle cost estimate. Lifecycle costs include initial build-out and then three nourishment, renourishment episodes every five years. So over that 20-year period, it's really four things happening. So the lifecycle cost for this option is 26, sorry, 28 million, and that would be four nourishment events over 20 years. Some considerations with this option is the limited creation of a dry beach. We mentioned that with RBSP-2 and one, we weren't able to hold sand where we really needed the most. So same would happen with this option where we couldn't really guarantee we could, we could keep sand where we need it. It could just slip right off into the City of Carlsbad again. In this slide, I say no downdrift impacts, but really after talking to some people, that's, that's not really true. There's, there's still some things downdrift we need to think through. With RBSP-2, for example, Tamarack Beach experienced surfing impacts from having too much sand. It created a steeper beach face and some backwash that impacted surfing. It also impacts like burial of nearshore reefs and things like that that might be, need to be thought through. The second option is groynes. This includes four 600-foot-long rubble mound groynes or rock groynes. Beach nourishment would be the same as alternative one, which would be 300,000 cubic yards placed initially, but you'll notice that the renourishment frequency is 150,000 cubic yards. So based on our modeling that we did on this option, we think we need about half as much to sustain the amount of beach we would for, as compared to option one. So the clear, you know, benefit of groynes, you're keeping more sand where you need it. And then another thing to mention with this is that this includes an amount of sand placed on the downdrift side. You'll notice from about, if I read it, but just on the southernmost groin, there's a fraction of sand that'd be placed on the downdrift side, and that's to mitigate downdrift impacts. The amount of sand placed in that zone would be optimized or refined based on the next step, but, you know, there's a lot of successful examples of how to manage these downdrift impacts, and that would be something that we'd be aiming to do both with the scientific monitoring program, but also with the amount of sand placed in this downdrift apartment. This lifecycle cost for this option is 30, I'm sorry, $51 million over that 20-year period. That'd be the initial build-out of the four groynes, placement of 300,000 cubic yards with 150,000 cubic yards placed every five years for 20 years. Things to think through are surfing impacts, downdrift impacts, lateral access, which is, you know, these are all things that many have worked through globally with groin fields. The one I like with, let's talk about with lateral access is the Newport Beach Groynes, which actually hook up to the back shore, but you can't even tell because they're buried with sand most of the time. So I think that's a nice example of how to make lateral access work. Nearshore currents are likely around groynes, but that's something that's, I think, very familiar to your city lifeguard personnel in that, you know, around North Jettie, South Jettie, these rips are present and managed effectively. The third option would be to extend the South Jettie and place sand similar to alternative one. So it'd be 300,000 cubic yards placed every five years at that same spot as alternative one. And then you extend the South Jettie or Sandley Ray Groin to try to catch sand before it makes it to Harbor Beach and back into the entrance channel. So this option is best coupled with a backpassing program, like where you can catch or you physically mine sand from the groin and then move it back to the south. This option costs $36 million over the 20 years. Some key considerations is the performance of the beach fill. It's also going to be difficult to predict where that fill goes. It goes south or north depending on placement timing. It's going to take that additional step of management of that fill and backpassing of that fill from the groin back to the south. This is a, has the potential to impact a known surfing resource at the South Jettie. So that's all things to think through with this one. The fourth option is a multipurpose artificial reefs. The pilot phase or Phase One would be two of these structures placed 1,200 feet apart. They'll be emergent within the middle of the structure and submerged on the edges. The intent here, similar to like the Venice Breakwater or sand spit up in Santa Barbara where you have kind of a reflective base of the rock kind of in the middle, whereas the edges could be surfable. The idea with these structures is they really just dissipate all the wave energy and allow the beach to build behind it. This is the most expensive option. It's almost $150 million over the 20-year period. This option is an unproven design. There's surfing, multipurpose artificial reefs built around the world, though they've had mixed results. There are some that are showing more promise recently, but there's, again, some risk there. Downdrift impacts similar to the groynes would have to be considered and mitigated for by placement of both a pre-fill and also placement downdrift. Nearshore currents similar to groynes would be something to think through and could be mitigated with lifeguard services. I'm going to now hand it off to Aaron Holloway, Senior Coastal Engineer with GHD, to talk about the performance of these options and how they were scored within the MCA.
Good afternoon. I'm going to walk through a little bit about the numerical modeling, and this is the tool we use to compare each of these options and alternatives to inform the scoring that we'll talk about in the multi-criteria analysis. So we used a one-line shoreline model. It's called Litpak. It's developed by the Danish Hydraulic Institute. It is a common tool used, you know, throughout the world as well as California in evaluating shoreline change. And coastal modeling is inherently difficult in trying to mathematically explain very complicated processes. So Oceanside historically has, has been a difficult area to model, and that's exemplified by, you know, our research into past studies. The Corps of Engineers did a very sophisticated physical model study down at the Waterway Experiment Station back in the 80s, and they did over 80 simulations in that physical model of different growing configurations, offshore reefs. And they came to the conclusion that, you know, one, groynes was preferred option, but also that they had a very hard time replicating conditions in Oceanside in their physical model. And physical modeling is as robust as you're going to get in terms of predicting what can happen with coastal structures. So it's important to note that coastal modeling isn't incredibly accurate, but it is a useful tool for comparing different alternatives like we're looking at here, groynes, reefs, nourishment alone. And so the approach we took was to look at the city's, the south reach from the pier basically to Carlsbad to start with, and look at, model the previous sand dag events and then model those same events but with retention options in place. So the screenshot you see here is an example of groynes placed along that reach and then also offshore reefs placed along that same reach. And the results show that you can retain significantly more sand volume within that reach with these structures. And that's not surprising. That's what they're designed to do. And so we took that and we scaled it down to then this pilot reach where we're just looking at a 4,000-foot stretch of shoreline and did a similar approach where we looked at a volume of beach nourishment by itself. How long does it stay? How wide are the beaches? And then we did the same thing with groynes and reefs, and we found that the retention options can create a, you know, 100-foot to 200-foot wide beach on average over this five-year period compared to beach nourishment alone would create, you know, a 50-foot wide beach on average, and it would only be there for, you know, two of the five years essentially. So that's kind of the main result from the numerical modeling. And then to compare each of these alternatives, we looked at a variety of criteria in this multi-criteria analysis, and each criteria was developed based on feedback that was received in the first public workshop. There were concerns around downdrift impact, concerns about sea level rise, surfing resources. And all those were reflected in the categories that you see here. We have technical performance, financial, and environmental as the three major categories. Technical performance and environmental both make up 40% of the total score, and then financial criteria makes up 20% of the total score. So all these alternatives were scored against these different criteria, and then their total score was added up to figure out, you know, how they compare against one another. And so this is a plot of the results. The lowest-scoring alternative was no project, which is essentially maintaining the status quo. It's ineffective at providing beach, ineffective in, you know, restoring environmental, you know, habitat and providing coastal access. The best scoring, best scoring alternative was the growing system at 81%. It was the highest scoring in technical performance and the highest scoring in the environmental category as well, largely due to the ability to retain a wider beach with less frequent beach nourishment. Multipurpose reefs was also effective, but comes at a much higher cost. And so the cost, cost element was really what, what separated multipurpose reefs and groynes. And then the other important comparison we did was we looked at, you know, acknowledging the total, the bottom line cost, beach nourishment was the lowest-cost alternative, but you don't get the same beach width with that option as you do with groynes and reefs. So we wanted to look at the value you get for that investment. And although groynes require a bigger investment, they also generate a much larger beach area. And so when you look at the dollar, the dollar cost per acre of beach restored, it's actually significantly lower for groynes than it is for beach nourishment alone. And to achieve the same benefit as groynes with beach nourishment alone, the scale would be very expensive and as well as the frequency required to get that beach sand to stay there would be, would be enormous. I'll turn it back over to Brian for a discussion of sand distribution.
So with each, any of the alternatives we looked at, we know we need lots of sand. So the, the idea was to look at a number of ways to bring this economical source of high-quality sand to the city. Again, we're looking at that, looking for coarse gradation sand as opposed to finer stuff. The three options we looked at were a fixed sand coastal bypass similar to the Tweed River system in Australia. The second option is a semi-fixed bypass system, which is, we looked at a couple of projects that both, that all had merit. One that was in Delaware as well as some examples in Australia. There are smaller versions of the bypass system, smaller volumes, smaller cost. The third option is a kind of a spin on a traditional program, but it's called, it's a core, Army Corps piggyback where you basically take advantage of a core, Army Corps piggyback where you basically take advantage of the mobilization of a dredge contractor and try to contract with them separately and take advantage of them being mobilized to the site. Within each of these options, we've recommended or for consideration the potential for a sand distribution pipeline system that would be buried along the back beach in the city of Oceanside. This distribution system has a key benefit of having, kind of being out of sight, out of mind with being able to bring sand past known constriction points, notably the North Coast Village through the pier complex or through the pier and under the lifeguard headquarters and then under the harbor potentially. So what you've seen in this graphic is, and green is where we've proposed doing maybe horizontal directional drill, drilling to get pipelines underneath these constriction points to, again, get this sand further south without having to mobilize pipeline every year. So that, again, some key components with this is you save costs on the mobilization, demobilization of building the pipeline. You have the improved safety benefits and beach access improvements where you don't have to see or deal with the pipeline. So some considerations that we'd have to think through within the next phase is to design a one-size-fits-all solution to this pipeline system. We'd have to think through some things because basically dredging requires the equipment. Dredging consists of specialized equipment that depends on the type of sand, the diameter of a pipe, and the distance that you're basically dredging. So all those things would need to be considered to try to make this a one-size-fits-all solution. We'd want the Corps to potentially be able to hook to this as well as the city to bring in the core sand. One last point is the economics of this. We'd want to see kind of when this would start to pay for itself, the initial cost versus the long-term cost. So we didn't get as far as to secure a high-quality source of sustainable, high-quality source of sand within our study. The logical source is Camp Pendleton pilot against the north breakwater. We've tried to initiate conversations with them and didn't get too far at this point. So we were not able to go all the way to down the road with this distribution option. We just kind of went as far as to narrow the field to two options that we think make the most sense, and that's the semi-fixed system or the core piggyback type of program. In the semi-fixed system, we think that something similar to what they do at the Indian River inlet in Delaware makes the most sense where they basically manipulate cutter, cutterhead section dredge with a crane and pick up sand from a fixed location or semi-fixed location that can move depending on where the deposit is during that year. So we think that's makes the most sense. It's semi-successful of moving about a hundred thousand cubic yards per year around that inlet, so that could be something we could look at here. And then looking at a core piggyback operation where we have Manson or whoever's doing the core dredging do some work after or before their project with the Corps contracted directly with the city to dredge a high-quality, high-grain, you know, large grain-sized sand deposit and bring it to the city beaches. This is, I want to note that this is different than just giving the Corps more money to dredge a deeper hole. It's dredging a new deposit that's this higher-quality sand. We landed on just securing a high-quality source of sand is key for the next steps of this project, further dialogue with Camp Pendleton is needed. Now I want to summarize the findings of our study and what we've talked about. Four primary challenges that we see them within the city of Oceanside in that the harbor complex blocks coarse-grain sand from making it to Oceanside beaches, really seeing limited gains from the core harbor dredging program. Again, this is a navigational program. It's, I don't think it's intended to build beaches, so that's not a shocking conclusion. The third one is that the regional beach sand projects by themselves, of course, you know, great sand from the offshore deposits by themselves didn't stick around so long, so it kind of validates the need for retention. And just kind of nodding to the past of how these decisions are difficult, but I think it's, we're at this deflection point where we kind of need to maybe make a bold step. We, as Aaron spoke to, the groin scored the highest on the MCA analysis. And as far as sand distribution alternatives, we really need to lock down that sustainable, high-quality source of sand. As far as options, it seems like the Indian River inlet system in the city of, sorry, in the state of Delaware looked like a really viable option or just doing a piggyback with the Corps annually. Thank you. I'll hand it back to Kyle.
So in summary, the results shared today are not new ideas. Groynes have been considered a viable option for Oceanside in several previous reports and publications over the years. At our second public workshop on June 30th, with almost two hundred in attendance, seventy-three percent were in favor of groynes as the preferred sand retention option. And with that, staff recommends that the city council approve the beach sand feasibility study report and direct staff to move to the next phase of the project to include design permitting and environmental work for a groin and bypass system pilot project. That's the end of our presentation, and we're happy to answer your questions.
Thank you. So we'll go to the public comment stage. We have a few people who'd like to speak on Zoom.
Correct. We, altogether, we have twenty speakers on this item.
Twenty speakers? Two minutes or three minutes, guys? Three? Okay. Three minutes it is.
Our first speaker is Kristin Brenner, to be followed by Bob Ashton, to be followed by Matt Caulfield.
But yeah, if you need more. Hi. I assume you can hear me. My name is Kristin Brenner. I'm a resident of Solana Beach, and I also volunteer with the Beach Preservation Committee of the San Diego Surf Rider Foundation. I just want to comment on how I am just very concerned as a southern neighbor of Oceanside that these proposed projects are really going to steal all of your southern neighbors' sand that would normally be moving down that way. So the beach sand feasibility study in today's staff report documents how Oceanside shoreline has narrowed, and we do agree with the vast majority of stakeholders in Oceanside that erosion of beaches is getting worse, largely due to river damming and armoring that are contributing to narrowing beaches. Of course, we're also concerned about sea level rise that can be expected over the next thirty years. There's a serious need for long-term solutions to retain the beaches and the coastal access in the city. But however, the current sand retention study was not designed to meet this long-term need. The groin project is studied, was only designed to last for twenty years. The groin fields and other selected alternatives were then only compared against no-project options. This creates a flawed premise where the city's only two options are to embark on twenty-year infrastructure or beach nourishment projects or just do nothing. And clearly, the city should not be doing nothing. The city should take this window of opportunity to take on long-term planning and design decisions through its local coastal program update, and it should focus on making long-term decisions that include removal of armory and relocation from the coastline. Groynes have localized negative impacts, which are well documented and inconsistent with public access and recreation policies of the Coastal Act, as was stated in the city's staff virtual workshop number two on the sand study. Groynes are designed to retain sand. If they're retaining sand, there's a portion of sand that is not reaching down coast. Living in a city south of Oceanside that will be robbed of sand by any northern groynes, we will personally feel that negative impact. We are not at all assured that a net amount of sand can be guaranteed to be added to the regional beach sand system. Sand is already expensive and will get more expensive and harder resources as sea levels rise. The city has failed in recent past to even renew the primary permit used for opportunistic placement of sand on the beaches, and the opportunity for failure through the blockage of sand to both south Oceanside beaches and other regional beaches would be dangerously high. So I urge the city council not to delay holistic planning that benefits the vast majority of public use of the beach and to oppose this groin project. Thank you.
Was that a request to make it louder?
Yes, yes. Well, we'll make it louder.
Thank you, because I was having a hard time, but I heard everything. That was, but if you can make it louder, that would be great.
And just real quickly, IT has informed me for all those that are on Zoom, if you could turn off the volume of your television set if you're watching this meeting on KOC-T, so that way it prevents any feedback on our end and we can hear you clearly. And also for people on Zoom, you had to have registered to speak by one o'clock today if you wanted to speak via Zoom. We can't do raise hands or if you're waving at the camera at us, you need to have registered to speak in advance. So we'll move on to our next speaker. Our next speaker is Bob Ashton, to be followed by Matt Caulfield, to be followed by Thor Stensrud. And Mr. Ashton, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, and I'll boost up your volume here, but you could go.
All right. Great. Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez, Oceanside City Council members, Oceanside citizens, and fellow coastal neighbors. I'd like to express my continued thanks to the Oceanside City Council for approving the sand study and the city's staff for the thoroughly professional method in which it's been conducted. I fully support and recommend approval of the study with the following considerations. Our city has suffered a continued beach sand depletion since installation of the Lake Henshaw Dam to the east and the Camp Pendleton Delmar Boat Basin to our north on the coast. The current state of our beaches and coastline is the worst I can recall in my fifty-nine years as an Oceanside resident. Please keep the momentum on the sand retention and replenishment project and move towards design and permitting ASAP. Any pause will only result in further damage to our shoreline. Doing nothing or managed retreat is an unacceptable option. First, I support the recommended shoreline solution of groynes and retention in concert with a well-designed replenishment and bypass system. Sand replenishment without sand retention is a fool's errand. The plan should include the entire coastline of Oceanside in a phased manner, not a pilot project. Groynes work. Many Southern California beaches benefit from the placement of groynes, the Oceanside Harbor Beach, Delmar Beach at Camp Pendleton, Carlsbad Beaches, Newport Beach, Santa Monica, to name a few. Secondly, a focused and proposed and purposeful sand replenishment for our coastline needs to happen sooner rather than later. Given the timeline for design and permitting, we cannot wait to start a robust beach sand replenishment program. I recommend using the recently approved funding to develop a near-term, aggressive, and purposeful sand replenishment plan to restore those hardest-impacted Oceanside beaches south of Wisconsin, such as Buccaneer, Cassidy, to name a few. Our downdrift neighbors would benefit from that replenished sand. Lastly, Oceanside needs an on-staff local coastal zone program administrator. Currently, no city staff person is focused solely on the Oceanside coastal and beach issues. The requirement for a singular focus on the shoreline in development of an adaptation and restoration plan is particularly critical given the current catastrophic condition of our beaches. The function of locating and sorting out the myriad sources of funding and securing the equitable distribution of historic funding opportunities from federal, state, and other sources justifies this full-time position. Indeed, creating and filling the position has the potential of an exponential return on investment for the city of Oceanside and its residents. In summary, the catastrophic and declining condition of our coastline beaches requires bold, immediate, and sustained action that includes continued efforts towards design and approval of permitting a whole Oceanside coastline, sand retention and replenishment system, developing an immediate sand replenishment plan to mitigate current sand loss and coastal impact, and rapidly establishing a
Thank you.
And that's time, Mr. Ashton.
Position. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment's from Matt Caulfield, to be followed by Thor Stensrud, to be followed by Sonny Warner, and we're getting Matt Caulfield on the line. All right. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, fine. Thank you. My compliments are due members of the city council for approving this study and to city staff for the inclusive and very professional way you have conducted the study. The condition of our beaches is an existential threat to the city's economic viability and quality of life. As such, replenishment and retention of sand must be among Oceanside's highest priorities. The study's recommendations must be implemented with a sense of urgency. Doing business as usual is not an option. North Harbor Beach, as well as other sources of sand, should be considered along with Camp Pendleton. Sand replenishment should begin immediately and not await completion of the groynes. There is neither time nor need for a pilot project. Groynes have been proven for at least a millennium around the world. We need look no further than Newport Beach or closer to home, Tamarack. And here at home, Harbor Beach. The urgent situation requires an expanded plan that covers the entire Oceanside shoreline. The shoreline south of Wisconsin should not be ignored. It contains four city beaches, thirteen city access points, and unencumbered public access along the entire shoreline. By the way, a very high percentage of beachgoers on these beaches on any given day are Oceanside residents. A project that covers the entire shoreline would ensure more unified consensus from a wide range of stakeholders and be perceived as getting the whole job done. Now is not a time for naysayers who don't propose a viable alternative. That is what we've had too much in the past and got us to where we are. It is the time for a plan that provides the best possible solution for Oceanside and a reason for all of Oceanside together to fight for it. In summary, a science-driven phased plan, which includes the entire shoreline, offers the advantage of addressing the entire problem, unifying all stakeholders, and attracting infrastructure funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Thor Stensrud, to be followed by Sonny Warner, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer. And you're on.
Take yourself off now, Matt.
Sure. Thor, I think you need to unmute yourself.
Ready to go?
Yes, we are. We can hear you. You could go.
Thank you. Dear Honorable Mayor and Council Members, first, I would like to applaud you for conducting this very important workshop on one of the most important issues facing this city in years, the increasing erosion of beach sand and the creeping approachment of the ocean. I am writing this email as an individual and not representing any group. Our family has lived on South Pacific and oh, South Oceanside for nearly fifty years. Excuse me. And I can attest to both the good years and the bad years of sand buildup and erosion. We're in the bad period, and you needn't be a scientist to recognize this. Most important, natural assets Oceanside has are the ocean, the sand, and the weather. You modify negatively any one of these, and you present the city with a potential dire consequences. We're experiencing that right now, and all the people of Oceanside are losing out. My message is very simple. Do the most you can as quickly as you can. Anything is better than nothing. All of Oceanside is calling for help. Obviously, this is a subjective matter for all, and no doubt, we all have varying views. Over the fifty years of living on the beach, my views have changed. At one time, I was opposed to dredging sand onto the beach because I felt it was like a giant hourglass. Fill it in at the top, and out it goes in the bottom, along with millions of public dollars. The GH study and the staff report were well-done. My conclusions come from knowing that three treasured assets of Oceanside, the ocean, the sand, and the weather, excuse me, are such because they create beautiful panoramic views, magnets to draw in and reward the population of Oceanside. My recommendations are, think big. Choose the retention form that retains the most sand. As the GH study shows, that is submerged reefs. They cost much more, but they give you the most sand, and that will be priceless to Oceanside. All of Oceanside for years to come will use this treasure. Forget a pilot study. You have all the information you need. Vote to start the entire project immediately. Be bold and take the entire project all the way down to Carlsbad border immediately, not in stages. The Coastal Act was enacted to protect the coast and open the beaches to the public. You need sand to do that. Hell, if we could go to the moon, we surely can get and keep sand on the beaches. That's my formal project. One comment I'd like to make, since being a Marine, and I'd like to say there are a number of Marines in this town, and I got to tell you, the Marine Corps and the federal government are absolutely complicit in the fact that we have no sands. And there are many of us here that will help to go to the Marine Corps. None of us are shy of calling Ethan and I at the headquarters of the Marine Corps.
And that's time, Thor.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Sunny Warner, to be followed by Carolyn Kramer, to be followed by John Tenaglia. And Sunny, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You could start.
Awesome. Good morning or good afternoon to all my neighbors, Mayor Sanchez and my neighbors. You just happened to be on a city council, that's all. Thank you. My name is Sunny Warner, and I own a home one block south of Tower Nine, that's Oceanside Boulevard. And I do live across the street from the Pacific. And you know what? I like groynes. I like what my fellow proponents here have said to you already, we support it. I say, let's go. Why? We have a sand problem, guys. We have a sand problem. I think Mackenzie Elmer of Voice of San Diego, she said it right last week. I'd like to quote her. "As the northernmost municipality along coastal San Diego County, Oceanside seems fed up with feeding everybody else's beaches. And over the years, the city spent a lot of time and money pumping or hauling new sand onto its shrinking shoreline, and that happened about a hot minute." So that happened until natural ocean current storms and high tides swallow that sand away, end quote, Voice of San Diego last week. To favor groynes, I believe, is to favor those local families who know exactly where to park their cars in my neck of the woods, and they bring their sand chairs, blankets, and coolers. And I love those surfers who are the dawn patrol, and they sneak their access onto fabled trails like mine, The Rock, and before they head off to work. And I favor all of these beautiful opportunities for our citizens of this city to hit the beach. But we cannot put our heads in the sand, and you know why? There's no sand to put your head in, okay? And I favor Leslie Gahl. I think her efforts of her hard-working staffer to be admired. She is somebody, it's a think tank almost, of hard data about economic impact for our city. And I know my fellow volunteers at Save Oceanside Sand were just absolutely thrilled by this study and recognizing groynes as the best solution for the city, and the city staff efforts are to be commended. Thank you so much. But I do have one correction for you. It's not a pilot program, y'all. It's not. It's a full-tilt program. This is a last-gasp program. Zero hours here, and you know what? It's your chance to be a hero for the future, so let's fix this now, because there's no turning back. We are a destination city. We have grown up. We're a player. And we have arrived as a tourist town of Southern California, if not the nation. And I believe your good decisions can happen, because you know what? We are kind of late to the party. We've got a lot of data, history, and information to make right decisions. I believe you can do this right. And I want to give credit to the friendliness of this, what I think is a historical lunch bucket hard-working military hosting town, and that is that friendliness has cultivated the stunning growth of the hospitality industry. And we know what that means. That's jobs.
And that's time, Sunny.
That's in the beds, lots of tax revenue. Let's go, guys.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Carolyn Kramer, to be followed by John Tenaglia, to be followed by Barbara Collins. And Carolyn, we see you, and whenever you're ready.
All righty, okay. Can you hear me, Jeb?
Yeah.
All right, cool. Good afternoon, Council and residents of Oceanside. This is Carolyn Kramer, representing the Citizens for the Preservation of Parks and Beaches in Oceanside. The Citizens for the Preservation of Parks and Beaches wishes to voice their objections to move forward to the next phase of this project. The CPPB is adamantly opposed to the placement of any sand-retention devices, including groynes, jetties, or other hard structures on our Oceanside beachfront. The mistake was already made when the Oceanside Harbor was constructed and blocked the natural flow of sand between our rivers and lagoons. The loss of sand is and has been exasperated by all the coastal armoring to protect the private beaches of beachfront property owners while the rest of our beachfront suffers from their gain. Surfing is an integral part of Oceanside's tourism, and Oceanside's waves play host to some of the best surfers in the world and some of the most prestigious surfing events. Placing another groin and hard structure on our beach will obliterate our sandbars at the pier, Tyson Street, Oceanside Boulevard, The Rock, and Buccaneer, as well as some of our other hidden gems in Salto. Our sandbars rely on the movement of sand at different times of the year to form those sandbars. Hard structures on beaches do exactly what they're supposed to do. They trap sand while destroying sandbars and waves and the movement of sand that forms them. I have seen many changes that have affected our waves. Our harbor waves were changed when the extension was placed at the end of the southerly-north jetty, and once again, when the groin jetty was placed for the sand bypass system. These two hard structures changed the way the waves broke and created very forceful riptides that changed the sandbars that shaped the way the waves broke. As was said at both community workshops, there is no guarantee that our waves will not be negatively impacted. The CPPB does not want to see our beaches southerly of any hard structures any more impacted than they already are. We do not want to see our sandbars that create our awesome beach breaks destroyed. Please say no to the groynes, or jetties, or any hard structures on our beachfront. Sand replenishment, yes. Hard structures, no. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from John Tenaglia. Hopefully, I'm pronouncing your last name correctly. If not, I apologize. To be followed by Barbara Collins, to be followed by Tricia Lewis. And John, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Last name is Tenaglia, silent G, but that's quite all right. Good afternoon, Council members and Mayor Sanchez. My name's John Tenaglia. I've resided in South Oceanside in San Mellow Beach. I'm also affiliated with the SOS Save Our Shore, Save Our Sand, Oceanside Group. So I've lived here my entire life. I've seen basically 65 summers, 65 winters. I can tell you, I've pretty much seen it all, particularly with the dozen or so large sand replenishment programs that have all failed over the many decades after a few winter storms, as Brian Leslie stated earlier today. I think that's one thing that's important that everybody can agree on, and certainly when one looks at the condition of today's Oceanside shoreline, from the strand south to the Buena Vista Lagoon, it's more than obvious. We have virtually no sand left along 90% of our Oceanside shoreline, which is a major issue for the public, tourism, the economy, it goes on and on. I've submitted to the council members some aerials. I don't know if you'll be able to see them here, but the length of Oceanside's beach from the pier south is roughly 13,381 feet. Carlsbad and the next attachment I sent in is about 8,091 feet. And when you get down to the Tamarack Hidionda Lagoon entrance, you'll notice at the north end, a very large beach, south end, erosion, which is typical of all groynes to the south. The Tamarack, that one jetty, basically, that was put in many, many decades ago into the Hidionda entranceway, has basically helped Carlsbad create such a beautiful beach that they've had for many, many years. So at the end of the day, if we just have a short four-grin program, we're in essence going to be starting another harbor south of our existing harbor. And I think we'll have the same problem going to the south. There are so many beautiful public beaches, including Cassidy and Buccaneer, that will be starved with a program that only stops at Monroe Avenue. So in essence, I ask you, why would we want to create a second harbor without extending our groin program all the way down the Oceanside shoreline? End of the day, I think we need the pilot, for lack of a better analogy, to go down the entire runway with jetties and not just down a short eight-block run. I'm in favor of a groin program, but we have a man-made permanent problem, the harbor. We need a man-made permanent solution with jetties along our entire Oceanside shoreline. So let's expand this program and make it a full shoreline program. In closing, I'd like to leave you with these three words or letters: ABM, All Beaches Matter, and Oceanside, California. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Barbara Collins, to be followed by Tricia Lewis, to be followed by Justin Fior. And Barbara, you're on.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. I'm Barbara Collins, an Oceanside resident, and I'm representing the Sierra Club. The Sierra Club recognizes the need for sand replenishment, and we also support a dedicated planning position for Oceanside for managing the coastal zone. We support enhancements to the natural system, so-called soft approaches, such as the beach replenishment and offshore reef. We oppose the installation of any hard approaches, including groynes, to armor our coast. They are counterproductive. The problems with groynes and hard approaches are that the groin specifically merely transfers erosion from one place to another further down the beach, and it makes it worse. Groynes can also create a rip current, and that's a big hazard for people enjoying our beaches. Rip currents can also accelerate erosion. Groynes also won't eliminate the need for costly beach replenishment. Sea level rise at this point is a certainty, even if the world decarbonized tomorrow. NASA projects a dramatic surge in coastal flooding by the mid-2030s. Our coastal planning should be based on 30-year maps of the future mean-high waterline, based on high sea level predictions. With dramatic surges in coastal flooding in a little more than 10 years, how long will the infrastructure and buildings directly on our coast be viable? Oceanside needs a realistic, cost-effective plan to protect our beaches and our economy. Cost-effective planning means start early, because late reactions are inevitably going to be more expensive. Sierra Club believes that our coastal planning must first consider natural adaptation tools, followed by managed or planned retreat. And only if both of these approaches are infeasible should we consider the application of hard-edged structures. And in all cases, the best available climate science should be used at all times. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tricia Lewis, to be followed by Justin Fior, to be followed by Sherry Mackin. And Tricia, you're on.
Good afternoon, Mayor Sanchez and City Council members. We're all here today because Oceanside has an amazing opportunity, an opportunity to reverse the damage done to Oceanside beaches by the Army Corps of Engineers decades ago. Everyone in Oceanside will benefit from this project: beach lovers, business owners, residents. It's a rare opportunity for the city to make everyone happy, a win-win, if there ever was one. While I would support any of the interventions discussed by GHD, including groynes, the most important and urgent order of business is replenishing the sand. If the best source of that sand is Camp Pendleton, as GHD seemed to indicate, then that needs to be a top priority for the city. We need sand urgently. I'd also like to address the attempt by a nationwide organization to influence the Oceanside City Council on this matter. This organization wants to turn Oceanside into a battleground. Please don't let them do this. Focus on Oceanside and what's best for Oceanside, which is getting sand back on the beach. There are very few cities in the world with a beach that offers year-round recreation like Oceanside's. It's a huge blessing and a huge responsibility. It's rare for a local government to have the opportunity to impact a public amenity the way the current Oceanside City Council does. Make this your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Justin Fior, to be followed by Sherry Mackin. And then we'll move into our in-person comments, starting with John Alessandra. And Justin, whenever you're ready.
Hey, I'm ready. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great. All right, so thank you so much for hosting this meeting, extremely important, critical to the quality of life of the citizens of Oceanside and all the visitors to Oceanside. Couple points to make, so I'll try to be quick. So first of all, to echo some of the comments that I heard earlier from Bob Ashton, Matt Caulfield, Sunny Warner, the position that was suggested to have a local coastal zone program administrator, I think is critical to help oversee this project, to help expedite this project, because I think I'm also hearing a big sense of urgency, but also to go out and try to find some funding. You know, I'm a CPA. I'm a former partner with a global public accounting firm, and I've audited local cities and governments, and I understand budgeting and all of the financial considerations that have to go into place before we sign off on a resolution like this. But having a coastal zone program admin is somebody who can go out to the federal government and find money to help with this project and to pay for themselves. I mean, geez, I think we just passed, what, a $3.5 trillion infrastructure bill? I don't know if it's specifically called out, but maybe there's some coastal money in there. Let's look for that. Number two, the sense of urgency that I just mentioned before. Look, I think I, to put a little more passion into this, I think I speak for every citizen, every visitor of Oceanside. I mean, we want sand on the beach yesterday. Like, this is, we are at definite, critical levels of erosion. It's dangerous down at the coastal access points anywhere south of Tyson. Wisconsin Street, Oceanside Boulevard, heading south. What's going on at Buccaneer Beach is just, it's horrific. It's sad. That was a gem, and it is gone. I mean, I heard some points made just a minute ago about sandbars for surfing down at Wisconsin. I've been surfing here for years, and let me tell you, there ain't no sandbars left. It's like deep swampy water. Access points are dangerous. I don't know if there's lawsuit potential there or whatever, but until this groin project gets, you know, rock one in the water, and I think I saw, what, four years, if we're being optimistic, we better start backfilling sand ASAP. So please, let's try to get a sense of urgency there and do something now. I agree with the point that was made earlier. Make this your legacy. You can do this. I mean, for reelection purposes, let's go ahead, be the person that was behind putting the sand back on the beach in Oceanside. I think it's great. And last point, you know, with regard to surfing, look at the best surf in Oceanside. It's at the pier, and it's at the harbor. And what's there? Groynes and a pier. So that's going to help with the surf. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sherry Mackin. And then we'll move to our in-person comments, starting with John Alessandra, to be followed by Stephen Mayshu, to be followed by Dirk Akina. Sherry, are you there?
Yes, thank you, Jeb. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I can't support placing groin fields on our beaches for several reasons, but I'll just speak to one here. What about neighbors to the south? Any drastic decision to place groin fields on our beaches should be a regional decision, not merely an Oceanside decision. We are already experiencing the effects of a decision made years ago by the Army Corps, when they went forward and built the boat basin, followed by construction of the harbor. Unlook to the future impacts of the region or the Oceanside littoral cell or drift. Along with being sand-starved from the Army Corps' projects, we are experiencing the effects of sea level rise, such as high tides and big waves, that has been moving beachfront's breadth around our beaches, impeding what little beach the public is able to access. It's really time to think big picture and bring our neighbors to the table. Some have said, "Our neighbors to the south already have groynes." Well, let's be clear: Our neighbors to the south do not have groynes. They have jetties, and the purpose of jetties is far different than groynes. Jetties are used to stabilize entrance channels to the harbors, marinas, or to sustain inlets, such as what we see with the three set at the mouths of the lagoons in Carlsbad and the set in Delmar at the San De Guejo River. We are seeing in these lagoons, with sea level rise and large waves, is sand-clogged lagoons, creating an entirely different problem for the lagoon environment. Just like the consultants stating that a net addition of sand to the system for groynes will not affect the south, when will we learn that engineers don't have all the answers? And who takes responsibility for that mistake? Some will point to the article by Lester discussing the possible use of groynes to slow down sea level rise as a pass to install groynes. Let's remember not to take the paper out of context, as he was referring to the use of groynes in conjunction with managed retreat to lessen the effects and give time to state coastal cities to implement managed retreat. Additionally, Lester points out that most groynes are no more than 300 feet, whereas the city purposed 600-foot-long groynes, twice the distance of other groynes. I urge this council to instead, to work with our lagoon neighbors, to capture lagoon sand and replenish Oceanside beaches now. Finally, I don't think we'd be in this world of sand hurt if the Department of Works did not let our SCOOP permits expire. We could have been supplementing our annual sand replenishment with opportunity sand, and I believe, along with other access points, South Wisconsin Street, would we have beachgoers enjoying our beaches instead of fighting offripe? enjoying our beaches instead of fighting off ripe rocks? I support sand replenishment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we'll move on to our in-person comments. We do have two podiums, so feel free to come on down and go to either podium. We'll start with John Alessandra, to be followed by Stephen Mayshu, to be followed by Dirk Akema, to be followed by Renata Engel. And Mr. Alessandra, you're first.
Yes, I'm a resident of Oceanside for the last 40 years. I reside at 1001 South Pacific Street, and I've seen the beaches in Oceanside disappear on a regular basis. We've seen the Army Corps of Engineers, their last time they were here was 2012, when they brought the ship in, and they've replenished the beaches from Carlsbad all the way through Oceanside. And they did it in October, and by November storms, half of their job went away. So it's a timing issue as well. I am supportive of the groynes. I'm also in support of the replenishment. And I also would like to see the city support the residents who have lost their rock walls due to the ocean pounding them because of the lack of sand protecting the walls. We've had these rock walls for many years. Mine are 30 years old, and in the last year, we've lost rocks, they've fallen into the ocean, and they've sagged, and we're understanding that we cannot get a repair from it from the city of Oceanside, which I think there's an ordinance allowing us to do that. But I'm here to support the replenishment of the sand, as well as the sand, the groynes to be placed at the Maran Beach Access. I think that's the best place for the beginning of the groin project to start, and I would like the city to see them help us replenish our walls. We need to repair them. We don't need to build new ones, we just need to repair the rock walls that have fallen into the ocean. Thank you.
My name's Steve Mayshu. I've been SOS, and I'm a retired Air Force officer colonel and an engineer. I've lived in North Coast Village for about 25 years and watched the sand go away. I'd really like to ask you to please approve the staff-recommended plan for the building the groynes and restoring our beaches. Our beaches have continually lost sand since the big flood of 1916. You read that in that Saving California Coast book that they talked about. That's when the big flood came and destroyed a lot, but it brought a lot of sand onto our beaches. And from that time on, other than a couple very small floods, no real new sand has gotten out into the surf. It moves up and down the coast, and according to Gary Griggs, about 1.4 million cubic yards of sand leaves our beaches in the Southern California region every year and goes into the canyons, Newport Canyon, Carlsbad Canyon, Scripps Canyon, et cetera. It's just gone. Once it's in those canyons, we can't get it back. Well, how much is 1.4 million cubic yards? Well, you get about 10 cubic yards in a dump truck. So that's 140,000 dump trucks from Malibu down to San Diego that would have to be dumping sand out there every year just to stay even on the sand. That's just to stay even, let alone make up for the loss that's been going into those canyons since we got our big surplus during the flood of 1916. So it's really important that we understand that this is going, we're not going to get it back unless we put something on there or we conserve what we have. We want to conserve sand, don't waste it. The Surf Rider Foundation is bizarrely against groynes, even though most of their surfing members that we talk to in our pop-ups, et cetera, all say, "I like surfing near those groynes, they don't bother me at all." Well, I don't understand why the surf rider, who they contribute to, objects to it. And I still haven't met a surfer that says they hate the groynes, but somehow they're all saying that. They're also saying that it creates riptides, which the science doesn't say that either. They say it's a, the groynes are a flawed approach, even though the groynes are used all over the world with complete success. I can send you a list of all the places they are around the world with slides. They're used everywhere, and nobody seems to have complaints except for people in California who complain about it. But we see Newport Beach and Ventura Beach, they've been working, and they were put in before the Coastal Commission started their activity. Every studies that's been done by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers or our consultants has, since, I guess since after World War II, has always recommended groynes and as the most cost-effective option as this one does.
Thank you.
So we ought to go with it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dirk Akema, to be followed by Renata Engel, to be followed by William R. Jackson, to be followed by Jimmy Knott. And again, as I call your name, feel free to come on down and line up at either podium. Thank you. Dirk?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Council, Mayor Sanchez, City Council. I'd like to thank Kyle Crowder for leading the effort to pioneer this sand study. Very important project for the city of Oceanside. In fact, could be the most important decision that we face in years to restore our beaches as such a critical element of our economy and of our lifestyle. I'd like to speak briefly about the public support that we have for this project. As Director of Save Oceanside Sand, we have over 400 members. A lot of you have actually received our quarterly newsletter, which details the ongoing progress of the sand study. The last couple of months, we've actually gone down to the Strand every Saturday and entertained the public by educating them on what's happening with the sand study. We've collected over 1,000 signatures that are in support of the city's effort to restore the beaches and to follow the recommendations of GHD. Real briefly, I think GHD has done a great job in looking at the alternatives that are available to Oceanside, and I think they've done a very, very excellent job by narrowing it down and recommending groynes and sand retention and sand replenishment, excuse me. I'm really excited that the city is poised to take this to the next step. It is going to be a big, big step, obviously, going in front of the Coastal Commission, although it is encouraging to see the change of attitude, which is occurring with the Coastal Commission. I certainly encourage the City Council to give staff the opportunity to make that point and make the case for Oceanside to be allowed to do what has actually been approved by the Coastal Act when it was originally drafted. Thank you so much, and I look forward to continuing this effort. Appreciate it.
Renata Engel, to be followed by William R. Jackson, to be followed by Jimmy Knott, to be followed by Lisa Harper.
Hi, I'm Renata Engel, and I'm an South O resident. And I was completely unprepared to speak today, but here I am. I'm, I'm, I guess my main focus is going to be, since so many other people have talked about stuff that's already happened, my main focus is going to be as a consumer of Oceanside's beaches. I am an avid outdoors person. I surf very poorly, but I, I use the beach almost daily, sometimes more than once a day. And so I've seen a lot of the impact personally for both myself and other residents and tourists that come down, and even our lifeguards and firefighters who sometimes have difficulty act or have absolutely no access to the beach if there is an emergency. I see all of those things, and I can hear from what the study that you guys have commissioned says, that the groynes are an effective method of retaining sand. I've spent quite a lot of time up at Newport Beach, too, and I've sort of studied the back ends of the groynes, not just the beach surface, but the areas toward the back of the beach where there's a lot more of the natural beach habitat that is starting to replenish itself. I hear a lot of environmentalists talking about the negatives of groynes, but I have seen personally a large increase in natural vegetation and natural cover for wildlife, for migratory birds. And right now, in the fall and winter especially, there is no shorebird habitat at all on any of Oceanside's beaches from the pier south. And the northern part of the beaches from the pier north, the human concentration of people is so high there that other than when the beach restrictions were in effect for COVID, when you saw tons and tons of seabirds on the beaches, you see very few, just because there are so many people. So those people in this group and who are listening, who are environmental, environmentalists, I think that needs to be taken into consideration as well, because it's not just us that use those beaches, and when the beach erosion takes place, it affects all of us and the whole ecosystem. Thank you.
William R. Jackson. Jimmy Knott. To be followed by Lisa Harper, to be followed by Alex Klein.
Regarding last week's meeting, afterwards, I sent you all an email regarding new sources of sand. The mayor asked, very simple, she wanted new, clean sources of sand. I gave up my time then, because you were running so late, to bring forward a new, clean source of sand. You notice on alternative one, they didn't provide any new, clean sources of sand. Around the nation, like in Louisiana, they are using new, clean sources of sand, and that is from pulverized bottles, and it's very good. They're taking bags, taking and covering the banks, filling them with those bottles that have been pulverized. And as the bags deteriorating, those sands are taking and replacing the banks there. That is one new source that we can tap that has not been basically brought forth. That solves two problems at the same time. We can use a local industry, Moody's, out of the Corazon, if they will be amenable to doing that. We could take and really start taking in care of our environment. Also, the next thing is sandbars. I assume that's what's being referred to into the plan that was followed up into option four, I believe, that we're also thinking about another option. Why don't we think about sinking a couple naval ships off the coast here, mothballed naval ships? That would create nice sandbars, creating a nice way in that angled right to take the sand to the coast. That has not been mentioned. Then you also have other areas where sand has been blocked. We need to go after those groups that blocked it. Escondido, number one, going back to 1916, you had the flood there. Part of the reason why was Escondido blocking that water. We look at the storms, also into the report, there was not quantification of the effects. They mentioned it very briefly on one page, no quantification. I could go down and down, point after point. We need more information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last call for William R. Jackson. Moving on to Lisa Harper, to be followed by Alex Klein, to be followed by Laura Walsh. And again, we have two podiums you can line up at, and we have some chairs down here in the front as well.
Thank you, Council, for addressing that this is our number one priority in Oceanside, it's sand. We just need to replenish the sand. I hope the council will make it their legacy to fix, to fix our beaches, but I do, the pilot plan would satisfy where our home is, but I encourage you don't discriminate. All of our beaches matter, from, you know, the harbor all the way to the, so if I would have one opinion, it would be that take care of our offshore and not just a portion of it, and go big and fix it all. And thank you.
Alex Klein, to be followed by Laura Walsh, to be followed by Joe Hill.
Hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council members, my name is Alex Klein, and I'm a fellow with Resilient Cities Catalyst, an independent nonprofit organization whose mission is to create catalytic change to help communities solve their most pressing challenges, including sea level rise. On Monday, the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change released their most recent climate assessment report, and the results are alarming. They state, "Many of the changes observed in the climate are unprecedented in thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of years, and the same, and some of the changes already set in motion, such as continued sea level rise, are irreversible over hundreds of thousands of years." That last line in particular is concerning for beachside communities like Oceanside. Even if we were to reach net zero emissions today, the water will continue to rise. Oceanside's storied past with nourishing and replenishing the sand supply has been costly, controversial, and too frequent an endeavor for more than 50 years. In 1964, after assessing the littoral drift as a result of the small craft harbor construction, it was understood that sand replenishment alone is an insufficient response to the conditions in Oceanside. The report we just heard from your staff in conjunction with GHD is a timely reminder that communities like Oceanside must take steps to adapt today. And while sediment retention structures, like groynes, can provide tangible, near-to-medium term benefits, any in-water projects have a limited and uncertain lifespan. However, linking these kinds of projects to a larger and longer-term strategy for the future of Oceanside's most vulnerable coastal communities, which by necessity includes engaging with difficult questions of land use, property rights, access, and managed retreat, this is an opportunity to buy time, not only protecting communities in the near term, but ensuring access to Oceanside's beaches in the long term. Remaining active in the region should the city choose to move forward with any of the solutions presented today, Resilient Cities Catalyst is here to support you. We cannot stem the rising sea, but we can adapt. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Laura Walsh. I'm speaking as the Policy Coordinator for the Surf Rider Foundation, San Diego County. Surf Rider represents the interests of the beach-going public, and for that reason, I'd like to speak to our opposition to the groin option presented. Surf Rider participates in regional sand conversations, and many of our members live and surf in Oceanside. We understand, as much as anyone, the toll that narrowing beaches takes on the city and has taken on the city. We also do not have a problem with the study or the way it was conducted. We take issue with what was not examined. The point that we see continually lost in these project conversations is that Oceanside is dealing with a long-term problem that precedes the frustrating construction of the breakwater boat basin and harbor. The Strand was flooded as early as 1929 and again in the 40s, before those federal structures were built. The city has been protecting this infrastructure and infrastructure all along its coast with armoring like seawalls and riprap, which have only added to the erosion of public beaches over time. Oceanside is by far the most armored city along our coastline. By setting this back to the beach, the city has attempted to engineer a tidal equilibrium that is well into the tideline. To be generous, this pattern of holding the line over the last few decades may be viewed as optimistic. Now, as the city faces a foot of sea level rise in the next 30 years, trying to hold on to this equilibrium is irresponsible. We get that groynes are supposed to buy the city time. We like that there are pledged best intentions to design the groynes to be adaptive, but the proposed groynes have a design life of 20 years, at which point sea level rise will rapidly accelerate. At best, we get a short-term solution that leads us right into a steep sea level rise scenario. The City Council will still have to tackle questions around armoring and retreat, but it will have spent at least $50 million on a project that will irreversibly affect beach breaks, create public safety hazards in the form of rip currents, which was detailed in the study presented today. And in a worst-case scenario, and frankly far worse, in a worst-case scenario and frankly far more plausible scenario, the groin field will wreck waves, create rip currents, cost a fortune, and rob southern beaches of sand, probably southern beaches in Oceanside, because sourcing sand is getting more difficult and more expensive, and any success of the project relies on a net addition of sand to the system. In a region where beaches are built on the north-to-south flow of sand, this is an exceedingly dangerous gamble. As was said earlier in the meeting, the idea for groin As was said earlier in the meeting, the idea for groynes is not new. That's because they continually get rejected. The Coastal Commission has not permitted a new groin in California for two decades because they are regionally damaging. Please focus on updating the local coastal program to establish long-term decision-making around armor removal and retreat. In the short term, the city can swiftly pursue renewal of its opportunistic sand permit and hire a coastal zone administrator to make savvier decisions about sand sourcing and placement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Joe Hill, who is joining us via Zoom.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Joe Hill, 22-year resident of Oceanside. Everyone needs sand. For the time I've been here, I've surfed in a lot of the areas of the beaches that we're talking about. I've seen sand go all the way down almost to Wisconsin. Served there, now it doesn't. It looks like the pilot that's going to be presented, or is being presented today, is not a short pilot, looks like it's about four or five years. So I think that we really don't know what groynes are going to do. No one knows. We're anticipating, based on what's in books, what people are saying, but we have no clue how the groynes are going to react and make our beaches look. So let's take a bold step. Let's do a dual pilot. Let's put in a program with Camp Pendleton that shows how we can get sand replenished from there, and do that from Tyson to Wisconsin. And then let's put the groynes in at Oceanside down to Cassidy, and have a dual program to watch. Whichever one's successful, then we know what to do. But I don't think there's any harm in going that direction and making a decision at the end, rather than keep arguing back and forth, "Well, let's do this, let's do that." We know replenishment works, but it's been messed up for a while. I remember when the beaches looked really good after replenishment, but that's not happening now, so that needs to be fixed. If we can fix that and put the groynes down to the south end of the city, then we may solve our problem permanently. Also, let's think about charging developers sand retention fees when they come to our city to build. They're bringing people in, they're bringing, you know, they're making money off of what's going on in our city. Let's consider doing that. They pay in lieu fees anyway, let's consider maybe making that one of the in-lie fees. And I think today is the time. We need to make a motion. Mr. Keim, or someone on the council, needs to make a motion now to approve a dual-type test, so that we can see what will really happen in Oceanside to our sand. Thank you very much.
And that concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Back to the City Council, Councilmember Rodriguez.
I want to, first, before I speak, this is a citywide decision, and I would really like to see some action taking place, but I want to yield to--
Could you hold on for a second? Yeah, how long had Deputy Mayor Keim had his hand up? Because I couldn't tell.
As I say, I want to yield to District 3 and 1--
He just put it up right now.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to yield to the coastal district representatives first, before I weigh in. So I didn't know I was going to be called on first.
You're yielding to Deputy Mayor Ryan Keim?
Yeah.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Keim?
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. So I'm not going to rehash everything in regards to this project. This has been, it came forward because for so long we have said the Coastal Commission's going to say, "No, the Army Corps of Engineers isn't doing their job." And so we took that as an answer and did nothing. And so I'm very happy that staff, we finally brought something forward, and I'm hopeful today we're going to move forward with a solution. It is, it's a critical problem. We need to do something now. I keep, I hear these issues about the project and groynes. Let's just take the hard structures out. You know, we cannot go to the harbor and take a tractor and start plucking rocks off and remove the breakwater at the harbor and start getting sand from Santa Margarita River Mouth. It's going to starve Carlsbad Beaches. You know, and whether those are groynes or jetties, they stop sand. And if you go to Tamarack and north, they have very healthy beaches that their citizens can enjoy. You know, we arguably have the worst beaches in North County. Another one's going to ruin the surf. I disagree severely. I've surfed my entire life. I surf the harbor, North Jettie and South Jettie, because that's where the best surf is. And this is consistent. So, you know, I just, and I think the last one is, let's do something else. That's what I keep hearing. But there's no else. You know, let's do sand replenishment. We do sand replenishment. We can't do a living shoreline right now, we don't have enough room. And those are all things, and doing this project doesn't mean we can't do those things. Like one of the speakers said, if we do a successful project and are able to expand our beaches a little bit, maybe we can do a living shoreline. We can do these different, it expands our options, and it puts us in a much better spot. I mean, at the end of the day, I don't, I don't think groynes are anyone's first choice. It's expensive, it's not what we want to do. But we're put in this situation. Myself and the rest of the members on council didn't build the harbor. We didn't build the riprap. We didn't do the armoring here, so we have to deal with the situation that we were given. And it's a difficult situation, and we have to make difficult decisions. So I want to move forward today with this. I do have one concern, though, and that is that it did stop at Wisconsin. And I think it's critical, especially when you go south of Wisconsin. Those are often the beaches, Cassidy Street, Buccaneer, that many of our locals use, and I think are just as critical. So I don't want us to go anywhere without addressing that, too. And whether that's in conjunction with different permits to put sand in there, just however we deal with that, which is, you know, something we've already started working on. But again, I don't want to stop Wisconsin, do that for five years, and not address south of that until that starts working. So I'm going to, I'll make a motion now. I want to hear the rest of the council things. I want to thank Councilman Rodriguez for giving me time. And I think this is something I'm looking forward to, the mayor's comments and leadership in getting us forward so we can have a unanimous vote today and get our city back on track to having the best beaches in San Diego County like we used to. So thank you very much.
So Councilmember Rodriguez has made motion, I believe it's to, as the recommendation, which is to approve the report and provide direction to staff, and that direction is to pursue the plan that will be $1 million, right?
Did you say Councilmember Rodriguez, or--
Excuse me, Deputy Mayor Keim. That's your motion to proceed, right, with staff's recommendation?
Correct, Mayor.
Okay.
I would like it into the minutes, because I know this is to begin with the permitting and the environmental review, that with this approval, we have to address south of Wisconsin. I don't want that to get lost. We have to do something. I don't, and I don't, you know, I don't have the expertise to recommend this on the spot. I don't know if that means two jetties or two groynes south there, if you could do one at Buccaneer and one at Oceanside Boulevard. I don't know how that works, but I want something added in there so we can give, especially my district, a place to go. I think that's critical for our city. If you go to Buccaneer right now, what we have is cobblestones at one of our most beloved local beaches and parks, and it's just not acceptable.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Councilmember, did you want to speak first for District 1? Go ahead.
Yes, I'd like to second the motion, including Buccaneer, and getting the sand further south. I think that replenishment without retention is, you know, wasted effort. So I think that the sooner we can move forward with this, the better for our beaches.
Did staff want to address that with the idea of moving the project, say, south, rather than trying to add other elements, which is not part of the study?
Thank you, Mayor. So when we got through the results of the beach study, we determined that groynes seemed to be the most feasible option to go with. And the consultant looked at putting in four groynes. It's going to be a challenge to get even four groynes put in at the beginning of the project. We're going to have to prove that these things are not detrimental to the rest of the coastline. They don't hurt surfing. So we're proposing with this, we're calling it a pilot. It's really, we're thinking of it as the first phase of a much larger project. So start with four groynes, make sure they work, everybody's happy. Then we add them all along the coastline. We could add 13 or 14 groynes throughout all of Oceanside's coastline. So the proposal was just to start with four, and that once we go through the permitting, it could actually get knocked down to two or something. So that's something we'll have, the battle we'll have to fight later on. As far as the location, the consultant picked the location based on numerous factors, and they can speak to that. But that location is, can be moved, so we can move it further south. I think they came up with Marone Street, Wisconsin, Elm, and another street. I'm sorry, I forget. But we can move it to St. Malo. We could move it to Buccaneer Beach. We could move it to Cassidy. It can be moved in other places, we can analyze it, and that's certainly an option. We were intending, with the next phase of the project, assuming this goes forward today, to do a lot more public outreach and kind of, you know, talk to the public some more. Where do you want these things to start?
Deputy Mayor Keim, did you want to change your motion based on the comments from staff? Basically, it's a demonstration project, it's a study project. So it's four groynes max. Did you want to address the placement issue?
Yes, we could figure out a way with staff. What's the best way? I don't want to move forward right now unless we address south of Wisconsin Street. So I mean, that's a critical part of this. I think we need to do it now. If we wait until we get that done, and whether we get two now or four now, if we wait five, 10 years before we start addressing south of Wisconsin Street, I think that's a failure. So I mean, it's critical north to south. I don't know, you know, if staff needs to come back with some kind of alternate plan that just allows us to address those critical needs south of there right now. I mean, if you go south of Wisconsin right now, even at the lowest tides, there's barely any dry sand.
Deputy Mayor Keim, did you, the motion that is being requested by staff is to go forward with the groynes, the four groynes, giving an option as to placement. The first, their first recommendation was per the location they provided. Did you want to change that part of the location based on further work by the staff? Or did you want to, are you adding something else?
What would it be? I understand the concerns going south with private property and how to access it. And I understand where we have them now, we, the city, has better access to it. And we do have infrastructure at the strand that needs to be protected, but there are some core beaches. So can we do, maybe Mr. Koger, what would be an appropriate way for staff to address a southerly move with some of the groynes? Or how do we address my concerns? And it's not just my concerns, it's a large portion of the community's concerns as well.
Deputy Mayor Keim, we heard from a lot of the South Oak community after the public workshop on June 30th. A lot of folks thought, they liked the idea, but they hated the location of the pilot project. They thought it's too far north, it needs to be in the south. So we can definitely look at placing this project starting as far south as we want. We can start at St. Malo, or we can move further north. That's not a problem. The consultant has said, yes, we can take this project and start wherever we want. And then, like I said, we view it as the first phase of a much larger project.
Okay.
Did you want to change your motion, or did you want to leave it?
Yes, if I, my motion could include addressing the possibility of moving it south, or if feasible.
Okay, okay, with a second, yes. So we have, the motion is to follow the recommendation of staff, but to move it further south.
And you can get Madam Mayor--
That's feasible, right?
Yes. May I add one thing, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
The reason I'm careful with this is I don't under, you know, there could be other technical parts to this, so I don't want to, I'd like staff to determine if that's possible, and then we move forward from there. But I want us to investigate that option.
Right, I think you mentioned that, yes.
Okay.
Okay, so Councilmember Rodriguez, then Councilmember Weiss.
Quick questions for staff. I like to look at things working backward, and at some point, you know, we're going to spend money on July's reports, we're going to have to go before the Coastal Commission. And hopefully, they've evolved their thinking to really entertain cities that are going to be struggling with this. I think it's going to, as sea level rise occurs, this is something that's going to come up a lot more. And so I understand staff's position is, hey, we got to set ourselves up for success, and that may be just two groynes, that may be four. We can ask for the world now, and we can ask for the locations now, but in the end, I really think this motion needs to give our staff the most amount of flexibility to set us up for success in passing Coastal Commission. So what that means is, if we can't go further south because the study shows it will be detrimental to habitat and surfing, we need to place them here, well, then we need to give staff that flexibility. So I think this motion really needs to give staff the most amount of flexibility with direction to get it done. And that may look like placing them here, it may look like placing them there. But I agree, my family's favorite beach that we've been going to for 20 years is Buccaneer. That's the beach, but you go there now, and there's no sand, you know? And so I really see the struggle, and I appreciate Deputy Mayor Keim's comments and suggestions to staff, but I really think we need to give our city staff the most amount of flexibility so that this project is successful. I prepared some comments as I heard speakers that I'll address quickly. And hopefully, we can, again, have a motion that gives staff the most amount of flexibility. I believe Oceanside must go big or go home. I really think we have a unique opportunity in front of us. We must make bold decisions that replenish, replenishes the sand on our beaches. I support a comprehensive plan that includes hard structures. I think a pilot program is not enough, but I understand that may be the, that may be the strategy to get this through Coastal Commission. I think there's a lot of speculation, and I think that speculation and that mystery will be alleviated through the scientific observations that are made through this pilot program. I don't think anyone wants to ruin surfing. I don't think anyone wants to destroy habitats, but we're not going to understand those dynamics unless we move forward on this study and on this pilot program. So I'm in full support of staff's recommendation. I just believe we should give our city staff as much flexibility as possible as they attempt to navigate this very politically complex dynamic that they're about to undergo. Thank you.
Councilmember Weiss.
Yeah, I have a question for staff. The motion as it's presented now is not just for groynes, it's also for a bypass system. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure that it's not just for one phase of it, it's all of it. And I do agree that we need to go bold to go home, and I would agree with the flexibility. I understand why some of those locations were chosen. But I think if, you know, all we're doing is include the design and permitting and environmental work, if that means it needs to be more, we need to go south, I want to make sure you have that flexibility as well. So I will be supportive of the motion.
Okay. So I have actually served as a Coastal Commissioner for four years. And I have, I started being, serving as a council member in 2000. And what the consultant said was, this is not new. I mean, I think when I first came on in 2000, they had just completed a study on groynes, and it just, you know, it's not, it's not new technology at all. It's, it fell flat on its face. I don't know how much was spent on that study. So far, we've spent, what, $260,000?
This study is a little bit over $200,000.
$200,000.
We brought an amendment for some add-on last week.
Right.
Roughly $200,000.
Yeah, and we're talking about spending $1 million to, for design and for permitting, to go through the permitting process. I have, I also have served on the shoreline working group for Sand Egg. And I did feel that I got more out of that process than, say-- that I got more out of that process than, say, the work from the consultants. I actually felt that the work of the consultants was not as good as the studies that were done by Sand Egg. I did feel that the cities were flawed in their analysis, assumptions and recommendations. 15 years ago, I actually came to the council right after Solana Beach, decided to address their sand issues with respect to, you know, having, being able to afford a sand replenishment project more often. And so what they did was they'd raise their TOT by 2% and have been able to replenish. I brought that forward with the help of Solana Beach, I think the mayor at the time, and was hoping that we could raise ourselves, we could raise TOT by 2%, especially since much of the interest has been in terms of tourism. Unfortunately, I couldn't get a second. So 15 years ago, unfortunately, it was not a high priority and I think that but for, if we had gone forward at that time, we would not be seeing the problems that we're having. You know, they wouldn't be as bad. I would prefer a better approach. I would prefer a regional approach. I did have a chance to, and I definitely want to move forward with sand replenishment. I mean, like now, like as soon as possible. I know we don't have a permit and it may take a year to get that permit. So I'm really, you know, pretty unhappy that that happened, but we definitely need to do that. And I think we need to work, move forward now with a second replenishment project every year, not just rely on the $5 billion project that we get for the dredging and sand replenishment from the Army Corps of Engineers, but that we do our own sand replenishment project in every year if we can. I've, I have reached out to the mayors of the other north coastal cities and they do not support this. You know, they are very concerned about sand starvation anywhere south. And during the meeting that I attended, it was really, really clear that anywhere south of hard structures will see sand starvation, which is why the SouthO residents were especially upset that this would be placed more northerly, which would lead to more sand starvation for SouthO. I would have wanted to study other, you know, alternatives to run at the same time. Say, I think Deputy Mayor Kime alluded to living sand dunes, you know, which apparently were not studied. I did get a chance to talk to Mayor Nancinida's and she feels that that program, which, I mean, but for that, the sand, the beach was completely disappearing, completely, and it was impacting a major road. And so I'm surprised that we didn't do that. We didn't study that. The mayor of Del Mar indicated to me that they're definitely looking into alternatives to saving their beach. And she told me alternatives 1, 2, and 3. It was sand, sand, sand. She's looking at, or they're looking at, the number one place for sand is Henshaw. Number two, Hodges. At Hodges, she said, there were 30 million cubic yards of really, really phenomenal Mayor for Carlsbad talked about going into the lagoons for Batiquitos, Batiquitos Lagoon. The Army Corps was supposed to draw out sand from there and Army Corps has not done so. So there's a ton of sand there. Awa Edondia, San Lejo, I mean, there's so many places where they're looking for, Carlsbad is looking into sand. The projects that have been approved and that have received assistance from federal funding, for example, have been sand replenishment projects. The Coastal Commission, I do not believe will be approving this at all. They have not approved, you know, hard structures. And the only thing that I've seen that they have been willing to approve are extensions of jetties, but for very critical reasons. And so I, I would prefer to spend this million dollars in getting sand on our beaches immediately, like as soon as possible, through sand replenishment, knowing that the Coastal Commission will not be approving this. I think it's a waste. It's a waste of time and effort and money and it's also letting our communities down thinking that this can possibly happen here. It is, it would severely starve, severely impact, in a negative way again, all cities south of us. And, you know, I was there for the presentation at the shoreline working group. I've since talked to several members that were present. They're not supporting us. If we do not have any support from other cities, which, how can they? I mean, it would mean starving, you know, starving their beaches. This is not going anywhere. So that's my biggest concern, is that we ought to have found the least pushback to do this immediately, to do this now, and that sometime later, if you want to try to experiment with the notion of trying to bring this to the Coastal Commission, you know, knowing that it's, you know, probably 99% chance of no, you know, I could see that. But to say right now, you know, we do need sand, we need to do something immediately. And I think the only way to do that at this time is to do several sand replenishment projects along with studying other things like sand, living dunes, living seashore. So as much as I was hoping to be able to support the work that staff did, I do think that they fell short of really getting us to the place where we could get support from the community and I mean, from the region, from Sand Egg, from different places. We're not going to get it. And so I think that it's very, you know, I feel very, I guess, disappointed. I want, of course, go forward with the sand replenishment part of the question here, of the motion, but I do not see how, I don't want to waste people's, I don't want to waste our million dollars on something that's not going to get through. I'd rather spend that money on getting sand on our beaches. No other lights, please vote.
Deputy Mayor Kime has his hand raised.
Oh. Deputy Mayor Kime?
I'll be brief. Just make sure that I motion, staff understood I support what Councilman Rodriguez said. Again, that's why, that was the spirit of my motion, was to allow enough flexibility for staff to get this done. What, I understand Coastal Commission can say no, but that's, you know what, and I want them to tell all of our residents that no, and with their mission statement being coastal access, we don't have a beach. And I want us to do everything we can to bring a beach to our city. If they say no, they say no, but we're doing everything we can. And so I appreciate staff's hard work. I'm glad we're going to move forward with something and begin the process to get it fixed, however long that takes. So, thank you very much and let's vote.
Let's vote.
Deputy Mayor Kime, how do you vote?
Yes.
Not working? Oh, yeah, right.
Motion approved, 401, Sanchez no.
Thank you. Thank you. Next on the agenda is item number two, which is Public Communications on City Matters, off agenda, and I understand we have Joe Hill.
We do have one person in person to speak. Joe Hill registered for the wrong item, so we'll move on to Jimmy Knott, who is here in person.
From the SouthO Community Merchants Association there, this was also attended by Mayor Sanchez. Just a little issue that may come up and I just wanted the council to be aware of it. And that is that there are some outside Oceanside investors that are purchasing property in SouthO that we don't know exactly what their plans are, but they are making sizable purchases. And it's starting to have some local economic impact, even affecting some businesses that had to actually close. And there's a fear that it may be taking and having some cultural impact and we don't know how far north it will expand, but we need to start looking at potentially Oceanside and SouthO standards to be entwined into any land deals that may come up, especially large land deals that could be taken, having the purchasers at least consider cultural impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting will now be adjourned to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Wednesday, August 18th at 3:30. Meeting adjourned, thank you.